...staff meeting on March the 22nd. And our first order of business is Commissioner Greg Kesterman to look at a comprehensive health review update of COVID-19.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks once again for having me today. Things continue to be very bright for our community with regards to COVID, which is excellent news from my perspective and everyone's perspective, for sure. I want to just start off with a little bit of perspective on how we did this season with infectious disease, specifically flu. You may have seen this graph before. The black line represents five-year average of flu hospitalizations in our community. And I think worth noting, people get the flu all the time and we don't know about it. You get tested when you go to the hospital to find out exactly what's wrong. And so this is a pretty accurate number for flu for our community. So, black is five-year. The blue line at the bottom is 2020 to 2021, so the winter season or the flu season. And you can see at that time, we did not have any mandates to stay inside, but we did have mask mandates and other tools in place. And we pretty much eliminated flu in 2020 and 2021. The red line represents this year's flu season. And you can see, you know, we don't have mandates in place. We did, though, as a community, continue to work hard on cleaning, keeping sick at home, and other social distancing and things of that nature. And we did a marvelous job as a community at keeping flu low within Hamilton County. Another way to look at this, switching back over to COVID, is how do we do with COVID-19 cases when you normalize it? So, this is Ohio data, rates per 100,000. And you can see Ohio and southwest Ohio's current rates. And then this is all of southwest Ohio, which clearly did worse than the state of Ohio. And I'm proud to report here in Hamilton County, because of our hard work and because of our community's efforts, we were able to be lower than the state average for COVID-19 cases, which I think is applaudable.
Well, why don't we applaud? Yeah.
So, now looking back to some of the normal slides that I share, here in Hamilton County, we are at about 1,000 active cases of COVID-19, which is significantly less than we were just a couple of months ago. Our cases per day is about the same as it was a few weeks back when I presented to the Commissioners. We are at 46 cases per day. Obviously, we'd like to see that get closer to zero, but I think that's kind of the baseline at this moment in time. Another view of the county kind of showing cases geographically, you can see, once again, the county has seen massive decreases in cases all throughout the community. This data is about one week old. I had a chance this morning to see today's data, although I don't have the graphic. And the whole county is yellow at this point. There's no dark spots anywhere, which is excellent news. Our reproductive value is right around 1. For Hamilton County, we are at 1.02. For the region, we are at 0.89. And our percent positivity continues to be low. For the region, we are at 1.9. And I'll show you in a moment, but Hamilton County is just slightly higher than that. We continue to see decreases in hospitalizations in Hamilton County. Today, we are at 123 people within our region, 21 individuals within the ICU, and 20 individuals on the ventilator. And unfortunately, we do continue to see deaths as associated with COVID-19, although those numbers are slowing down. But obviously, over the last month, we have seen rates as high as five to 10 deaths per day, which is definitely an impact in our community. So, here is where we look with regards to the CDC maps. You can see, this is the original. I'd show it every week, although a slightly different view. This is cases per population. Today, Hamilton County is yellow still, which is low. We are at 21.04 cases per 100,000 with a percent positivity of 2.43. And realize that is only two metrics. And we've now gone to the five metric map. And all of southwest Ohio and part of Indiana and part of Kentucky have turned to green or low transmission, which means basically, keep sick at home. We encourage vaccines and people to go get vaccinated and to stay up to date. But we can essentially get things back to normal. As I've mentioned in the past, if you are autoimmune deficient or have other illnesses, you probably want to talk to your doctor. You might still want to wear a mask, just like people did before COVID-19. People who were getting certain treatments would wear masks to slow the spread of infection. But otherwise, I think we're kind of back to a new normal here in Hamilton County. And then the last slide that I have for you is our vaccination slide. The Test and Protect website continues to be updated. Our team continues to go out and do vaccinations, although we've seen a drastic reduction in interest in vaccines, which is disappointing, and will continue to push that. We have gone from 44 nurses at the height of our vaccination effort. We are now almost down to 10 nurses, which is where we'll be. We're still operating a couple mobile units a day, although it's harder and harder to find places that want a vaccination clinic. So, if you know of anybody or if you know a business that's interested in bringing us in, we are going. And we don't have minimum numbers. I know at one point, we required at least 50 people committing to getting vaccinated. Those numbers no longer exist. So, if anybody's interested in anywhere in the county, we're happy to do so. And we still also have a homebound team. So, a couple nurses are willing to go to homes if people can't get out and about. So, we're still able to do that great work as well. That is all the slides I have. Happy to take any questions that you may have of me.
Thank you so much. And I talked about you when I did an interview yesterday about Test and Protect and the homebound services that you provide. And also, we as a board decided that we did not want to eliminate the monies that we had allocated for this purpose. So, we have 1.5 million that we have allocated, which 1.2 million will go toward the Test and Protect. And that remainder of it would be to keep that website up at Health Collaborative. So, but I did have one question. They said in a couple of weeks, there may be, there's a new variant that's out there. Can you talk about that a little bit?
So, there are definitely a couple variants traveling around the world. And with any of them, it's still a little too soon to see if they'll have an impact here locally. I think the thing that we have going for us here in the United States, and quite frankly in Hamilton County, is a decent portion of our population has been vaccinated. A decent portion of our population has also had the most recent Omicron variant. Most people, very mild illness. But then the newest thing that we have this time, when we didn't have it for the Alpha, the Beta, the Delta, or the Omicron variant, we finally have some treatments. We have antivirals. And so, you know, each time we were kind of, each time throughout the pandemic, we were kind of reacting to what we had. You know, early on, we had no PPE. We didn't know anything about how to treat people. We didn't have any antivirals, no vaccine. This time, we have all four of those tools. So, it's the hope that if we see COVID come back into our community, we won't have to take the drastic measures again because we have some of those tools that we never had before.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice President Reese.
Thank you. And I know you're always excited to have good news.
Right.
Because it's a way to bring some good news to us. But also, just wanted to highlight things that we were doing, things that an individual can do to just, you know, fight off these, you know, having COVID. Could you maybe emphasize the, because sometimes you think, oh, it's good news. Now, we're just, you know, going back to old habits.
That's right. So, you know, in general, this will help keep you safe for any infectious disease, so colds, flus, COVID. We're asking people, first and foremost, if you're sick, always stay home so that you're not getting people sick around you. If you are going out and about and you're touching things, we want you to wash your hands before you eat. If you sneeze into your hand, we want you to wash your hands. You know, we learned a little bit about personal space throughout the pandemic. You don't have to stand right next to somebody. You can give a couple feet. And things like that do just generally help slow the spread of infectious disease. And then just cleaning, you know, we've talked about that before. But in restaurants and in any public setting, it doesn't hurt to wipe down doorknobs, handles, restaurant tables, and spots where people are commonly touching. So, those are all just really some of the basic things that I hope that we as a community continue to implement in the coming weeks and months.
Thank you. And the other thing, have we, last time we were talking about getting some data, a couple of things I wanted to see data on. One, we had had that presentation by the Health Gap, and they were talking about, we didn't, we didn't have pre-data, but there should be some data coming forward, talking about, are there any, are there any side effects, you know, that people might be aware of? And I know we were waiting on the CDC. They were looking into that. I'd be interested to hear about that. And then the second thing also, there are people who had COVID, who survived it. But I had heard UC, I'm not sure, UC Health or someone said they were building some type of facilities for people because, you know, they had COVID, they survived it, but they still have a lot of issues, breathing, memory loss, short-term memory loss, long-term memory loss. There are some side effects that came from them fighting COVID, but it did damage some things. And there will be ongoing treatment. I'd like to maybe have something on that. I don't know if that's something you're tracking or something, or someone we could bring in to at least provide us with, how has that impacted Hamilton County? How many people were impacted with long-term care issues?
So, to the first comment about data, I will continue, and I've not seen anything since we last met, but I will continue to track CDC data. And if I see something relevant, I'll bring it before this commission. The second question, or the second comment related to COVID long haulers or people with long-term side effects from COVID. All of our hospital systems are doing work in that. I am probably not the best person to speak to that, but I can, I'll check with our regional group and often figure out who the best person is, and I'll make a recommendation that they reach out. I'll reach out to Administrator Aludo and let him know once I figure out the best person.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. I think that would be good. I don't know if it's UC Health or whomever to come forward, because we are one of the top people as it relates to healthcare through our health levy. And there are some long-term issues that hit people, no matter what their economic income was, that could have high financial ramifications for long-term. So, it'd be good for us to kind of get our arms around how many people in Hamilton County? Does this affect, what kind of, what's the age group, what, you know, what's the potential cost?
Yep.
Because I think those are some issues. We're very happy that these individuals survived, but also knowing that, I read that and I was like, wow, I never thought of that. So, that's something we might want to take a look at and consider and have information out as well.
Yes, certainly, that would be great information to come forward for us and also the people that are watching. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here again today. So, I was especially struck by the chart where Hamilton County did quite a bit better, not only than the state, but also surrounding counties. And so, I don't know if you can attribute that to any strategies that you implemented in particular. I mean, it was a group effort, I know, and you had a large team, including hospitals and other healthcare providers throughout the county, helping with the effort. But anything that sticks out to you that we did differently or in addition to what others may have done?
You know, I think the opportunity to present to this commission, the opportunity to present weekly on press briefings kept COVID in the forefront here in our community. And that's not to say other communities and other media outlets weren't covering COVID. But I do believe that we were very forthcoming with information. We, you know, the message is simple, but we kept repeating it. And so, I think it was always first and foremost for people when they were out and about. But I think, lastly, the partnerships. I think, you know, the four health departments worked together, the hospital systems worked with the health departments, which worked with our elected officials. I think all of these pieces really came together to make Hamilton County shine.
Thank you. I also wonder, and I don't know if you would even have this, if some of the other urban counties with high populations, we all received those Federal CARES Act dollars, others did not. And so, I wonder if there was an impact there. Would you mind, at some point, nothing urgent, maybe we could compare ourselves to the other counties that receive those dollars to see what kind of impact? Because that allowed us to do testing and vaccine and so many outreach programs that other communities didn't have access to.
Yep, absolutely. I'll reach out to my partners in those communities and see what, how we compare.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And so, Commissioner, I'm sort of going back to what Vice President Reese said. So, long haulers, would anyone who had been impacted by COVID actually contacted COVID, would they all be considered long haulers? Or there, is there a small portion that they have no impact at all? It didn't affect them at all, other than the disease itself?
Yeah, you know, each person interacted with COVID differently. Some people never knew they had COVID. Some people had symptoms. They resolved quickly. Some people have some long symptoms, like loss of smell, loss of taste, but...
So, it's a diverse of symptoms, but everyone, so some people never had any symptoms after contacting it, okay?
Yep. Yeah, so each person's different.
Sure. Okay. That's what makes us great, I guess, our uniqueness.
Yep.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you and your staff and all the hard work.
Thank you much.
Okay.
Bye.
Okay. Okay, we will move forward to our item number two, Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Update. Harry Blanton is here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you.
Good afternoon.
Yes, I'm Harry Blanton with Hamilton County Economic Development. With me today is what we call the SEDS team, or the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Team. So, we have Liz Bloom with Community Building Institute, Steve Johns with Planning and Development, and Ashley Keith from our office as well. So, all of us have worked on this and want to give them all credit for their good work. As you know, we've presented this to you a couple of months back, and we're asked to do some changes. So, we are giving you an update today on that. So, just for the general public to understand the whole process, what we do is we update the existing information on the SEDS every five years. We interview community stakeholders. We held four public input sessions. And then we updated the strategy and then presented that to you a little while back. The SEDS, the purpose of the SEDS is to create strategies that grow the county's economy, population, and tax base, to create strategic investment choices, to provide clear direction for county and local elected officials and other stakeholders on the future growth of our county, and then finally, to direct public and private actions that support a strong economy. So, the status that we're at is, as I mentioned, we brought this to you a couple of months back. You asked us to update the SEDS based on your input. Those two primary categories were, how does COVID impact the recommendations? And then, secondly, to look at it through a lens of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and to try to update the recommendations for that as well. So, if you remember, there were four basic categories. One was human development. There was physical development, business development, and regional development. So, we'll go over all four of those. The first is human development. So, one of the recommendations that we changed was what you might call the digital divide. A lot of our communities, especially low-income youth, are having a hard time getting access to Wi-Fi and being able to, you know, getting into their schools if they're at home learning. Or even workers now with COVID are working from home, so we need to have good Wi-Fi access for all of our communities. I know that the county is working, I think, to set aside about $10 million, is I think the number that I heard, to try to expand Wi-Fi into these communities. So, that's already happening. The next recommendation was to, for work and home hybrid models and their impact on municipal revenues. First of all, we just recommend that people be aware that this is happening. In the new SEDS that we're presenting today, there's a statistic in there that the Harvard Business Review said that over 20% of people in the age of 30 to 45 have resigned in the past year or quit their jobs to get new jobs. So, there's a lot of people changing jobs for flexibility for these hybrid models. And the impact that that has on municipal revenues is huge. And so, we're recommending that local municipalities budget and be aware of what's happening to their income revenues. I've heard the mayor of Cincinnati, Mayor Purval, say that after the ARPA funding runs out, the city of Cincinnati could have as large of a $100 million a year deficit. And so, obviously, some of our small municipalities won't have that big of a deficit, but they will be impacted by this. So, we're recommending that they find out, do business retention meetings with their large employers to try to find out when they're coming back or if they're coming back, and then budget accordingly and try to figure out how they're going to survive that. The next grouping is the physical development recommendations. Since we originally did this, the federal government passed the $1.1 trillion federal infrastructure bill. So, we put some recommendations in there for communities to be aware of that. But not only that, there's also been the state gas tax increase. And then locally, we did issue seven. So, all three of those funding sources are now available for communities when they're doing transportation and infrastructure improvements. And we updated that recommendation. Expanding on revitalization plans, many of our communities, especially economically disadvantaged communities, struggle to do redevelopment. And we added into this new SEDS, the, all the new sources of funding that are out there, not just the federal funding that's temporary, but the county's done a great job of adding additional funding to help these communities with the Community Revitalization Grant. There's the Community Economic Development Assistance Program. There's the traditional CDBG. And now, there's the Community Impact Program. So, there's a lot of new programs that communities, we want to make sure they're aware of. And then the final one on the physical development is our retail recommendations. You know, COVID, before COVID, e-commerce was having a huge impact on retail and bricks and mortar stores. There were a lot of changes that are happening. People aren't shopping in bricks and mortars as much as they used to. They're shopping online. So, that's having a huge impact on stores and malls and things of that nature and what you might call, I'm sorry, underutilized retail stores. So, you can see in some communities like Springdale and Tri-County, a lot of communities are totally re-changing and repurposing malls and other retail properties into more contemporary uses. The most likely for a mall is a mixed use. So, if you saw the articles on Springdale and Tri-County, that's going to be totally redeveloped into a mix of residential, commercial, office, retail. So, it'll be a total different type of property, total different dynamic, 24/7, more vibrant throughout the day and throughout the night. So, we're recommending that communities who have these retail properties look into more contemporary uses for them, redevelop them. And this is going to be a smaller footprint for retail in the future, so, because of e-commerce. And then also, there's a recommendation in there about, based on COVID, that communities can do things to try to promote restaurant and retail development through things like parklets or street calming, social distancing, so outdoor dining, spreading tables out. So, there's a recommendation in there about that as well. For business development, we added three new recommendations or expanded and updated. The first is on small business development. So, we just kind of updated that to make sure that we're including all the different entities that are out there helping small businesses. Obviously, the county is giving us some more additional money to reach out to small businesses across the county, and we're going to be creating the Small Business Office. We've actually found the person who we think will be the primary staff person for that. And we've offered a position, a contingent on the county approval of our contract, but we think we have a really good person that you'll, will be happy to introduce to you once they're hired. But we will be out there trying to help small businesses get through not only the pandemic, but just going forward, making sure that all these small businesses, especially micro businesses, are being helped. As far as business district assistance, that goes along kind of with the previous comment about some additional local county funding to help with that, like the other programs that I mentioned, the community growth grants and things of that nature. And then we just updated the Cincinnati Innovation Corridor. I think we just had some wrong language in there. We were calling it the Uptown Innovation Corridor. It's the Cincinnati Innovation Corridor, and we updated who were the partners in that. And then finally, we expanded on regional transportation, just again, to mention the $1.1 trillion federal infrastructure bill and all the other sources of funding for increased infrastructure. I know that the Brent's Brent's Bridge is going to be applying for some of that federal money. So, those are all the new recommendations that we added based on your comments. What we're, the next steps are that we would like to post the new SEDS on both the county and HDC's website for 30 days for public comment period. Once we have that 30 days expire, we will look at the comments and determine if there's a need for new revisions. And then we would come back to you for final approval, assuming that you want to approve it. So, that's my update.
Thank you so much for your presentation, and also, thank you for incorporating the recommendations that we brought forward to you. And so, I certainly appreciate that. It'll be interesting, as you talk about the malls and the changes, I know Forest Fair Mall, it went to another name. I forget what it was. It was bought, finally. It'll be, the whole thing will be demolished. So, it'll be interesting to see. It's part of Hamilton County and part of Butler County. So, see what comes out of that development. Be very interesting. I was thinking in general, as we get money to help smaller entities like the first suburbs, I know planning does a little bit of it, but to actually have a person that could provide technical assistance for those small villages or townships to help write grants, because if the money is there and they're trying to apply, the application may be pretty simple, but the ability to write grants for future monies that are available through the federal government. I know we help a little, but whether or not some help can come from you guys also, they need to reach out to get it. But I think it would be very helpful, because most of those small entities do not have a grant writer, so, okay? Thank you. That's all I have. Harry?
Okay.
I thought Jeff was saying something. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. To follow up, Madam President, on the Forest Fair Mall, and I guess at some point, we'll probably get more information. I know that that is going into the land bank of Butler County, and I just wanted to kind of figure out how that, how does that play? Because I know it's in two counties, but I think a lot of it's in our county, too. So, I just would like to get an update on what role we would have or if there's a role for us, because I think there's a great opportunity on that property. We have a lot of, a lot of our stadiums and stuff are down in town. But when we go north, there's some great opportunities and some great competition. And one of the things I really focus on, I want to have in here, is sports. We just had, you know, our high school sports is flourishing, and we're flourishing now in football right now, but some of our other sports. But the amateur sports is the area, I think, that we're missing that opportunity. And I know Hamilton, Ohio is, they're building a humongous facility and so forth, but we don't get any money off of Hamilton, Ohio. That's not in our county. And we have, I think, more of the infrastructure. We've got the hotel accommodations, opportunity for expansion of hotels. And, you know, parents, grandparents, when it comes to the youth, they're spending a lot of money. I know my, both my brother and sister and my in-laws, with my nieces and nephews, I mean, there's constant money being spent that I think we're leaving on the table because we're only focused primarily on the professional sports, and that's good. But I think it's a great opportunity for that area, even when you look at, I believe, Kansas City, right out there, I mean, their stadium is out. It ain't, it's not downtown. I'm not promoting that our stadium leave there, but I'm saying, that's a great opportunity right off the highway, could really bring us the revenue. And I think that amateur sports, there has to, I want to have that part of economic development. We should, we should do more. Our collegiate sports are good, but we should be doing more for amateur sports in all arenas, whether it's, you know, softball, or girls, boys, dance. I mean, it's a lot of money being spent. And I'm just the auntie, and I'm spending a lot of money. I said, man, where does the auntie rights come in at? I'm spending a lot of money. But my point is, that's an opportunity that I don't think we have a strategy in our county right now on amateur sports. I want to compete for the amateur sports that will bring in more money for us. So, I'd like that to be a part of economic development. I think we're doing a lot of good with entertainment, but we not doing as well with the coordinated economic development regarding amateur sports. The other thing that I wanted, I appreciate these add-ons, I just, and taking what we had said and put it in here. I just wanted to make sure, when you go to the business development component, I like to add in, you have the Urban League, Small Business Development Council, and the Women Business Enterprise Council. Couple of things you want to add, the African-American Chamber, because they also do certifications.
Yeah.
So, it might be in there.
That's not a comprehensive list. I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I just, okay.
Like mortar and hillbait and groups like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, you, okay, you do have the Lincoln Project in there?
I'm not sure if we have that.
You want the Lincoln Project? That's the African-American technology. Forgot her last name, Candace. She's bringing Black Tech Week.
Oh.
And that's a partnership.
Lightship Foundation?
Yep, Black Ship Foundation. But the Lincoln Project is a combination of her organization and the Urban League and someone else. But it's called the Lincoln Project.
Okay.
It's a major economic, public-private entity for black business initiative. So, you want to probably add them or look them up or talk to her about that. The other thing is, we in our budget also are concerned about, right now, African-American businesses, minority businesses, they are getting in the door in terms of whether it's over the Rhine, other places, but they're coming in as renters. And if you get the wrong landlord, eventually, when it's not popular to help African-American businesses, they will be wiped out. And we're looking at, even in our own budget, we put a line item around ownership. We're trying to get into African-American land ownership. So, they will also have an opportunity to own. A lot of these deals are done with government tools. And we come in as just the renters. We're now trying to move to commercial ownership. So, we want to make sure that that's included in our business development goals. And you have probably the numbers of how many, how much property we get and how much of this property is owned by African-Americans, even though they are required to pay taxes[1786.78] property is owned by African-Americans, even though they are required to pay taxes equally like everyone else. So we're equal on tax day and unequal every other day. We're trying to correct that. And then you talked about the Small Business Office, so we're excited to hear more about that. But just getting back to the goal in our economic plan, our goal is to be the number one county for small businesses. Coming out of COVID, we got a, everyone has a restart, every county has a restart. And we want, our goal of that office is how do we position ourselves to be number one? The best place to start a business, the best place to expand your small business, whether you're storefront, technology, or what have you. And so the goal of that office is not only the, the grants that we have put forward, but to put a strategy together to consolidate all services, make it easy, make it a one-stop, and then have a report to us every year. This is how many small businesses are in Hamilton County. This is the size of them. This is how many moved in. This is how many expanded. This is, this is the best place to go. Maybe there are some policy things we have to do around small businesses. Maybe it's prompt pay, whatever that is. Our goal is to become the number one county in Ohio and then number one county in the world, but that's the goal of this office, not just the grant process. But all the other components of making it easy, friendly, and, you know, we almost brand ourselves as come here because we're, we're the small business friendly county, because that is definitely the future. As you have said, many people are leaving jobs and starting their own companies. Those are the things that, that I had, but I think these are all great components that you have added to this, and looking forward to the final product. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Harry, for the presentation and to the partners for being here and for your part in the presentation. Yeah, I don't have much other than to thank you for taking the comments of the board and including those perspectives into the final report as we move forward here. I think it's not only recognition of some of the things that we put forward, but recognition of the partnerships that exist related to SORTA, you know, and infrastructure funding, as you note, and some of the local partners that are doing economic development work. And so it's good to point all of that out and make, make it explicit as you move forward towards the recommendations. So I just am grateful that the input was then incorporated, and yeah, look forward to the final. Thank you.
Thank you. And as we look forward, Harry, you have on here our next steps and to post revised CEDs on HCDC and Hamilton County website. From what you've heard from our group, there were a couple other entities you might want to include, but I don't see, I don't see a need for delay to start that 30-day process for public comment. And then we'll move forward and see if we can re-approve this.
Great.
I wanted to make a comment about Forest Park in general. I want to give kudos to administration because they work closely with the Forest Park Economic Development out there, and whenever they need assistance, Jeff and his people go out there to do that. Forest Park is under home rule, so basically they can do what they want to do, but we can make suggestions as it relates to what would be the best use of that area specifically, Forest Fair Mall. So they get consultation and collaboration from us, so that, that's a great thing. I also wanted to talk about, because I know Jeff has been working with them, as we look at a satellite office out there in Forest Park, and people have heard that, and they're wondering like what, you know, what service will be there, and so we'll talk more about that. But just wanted to give administration kudos as it relates to, there's another, which other one is home rule? I know Forest Park is, and I'm not sure, but there's another one that's under home rule, so we don't have a lot of delegation. That's why they have their own stuff. But anyway, we can certainly give some input on all of that property out there and what's the best use. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Sure. Coincidentally, I'm going to be out in Forest Park tomorrow night, presented their ED committee, so I will definitely bring this up with them.
Yeah, great.
Madam President, I want to just make sure my comments, Forest Fair Mall would be an excellent location. I talked to the economic development person, at that time, they couldn't get, they didn't have, the person didn't want to sell and all of that, and even asked the port authority, and they said they were up to date on their taxes, so they wouldn't like they could come in. So I'm not telling Forest Park they could do that. What I am saying, though, economic development, it doesn't have to be Forest Park. I like to see sports. Sports is economic development, so whether it's there or somewhere else in the county. The city of Hamilton is eating us for lunch in this area. This, I think it's called Spooky Nuke, is, I mean, it's got national attention, international attention. The governor's been there, they got state money. And I appreciate Hamilton. I love the people in Hamilton, the nice people, but the people of Hamilton County is who elect me, and I just know that we have, I just know that we have something somewhere with all the land that we have in Hamilton County to have a competitive facility that could bring all these people in. I mean, they're coming from everywhere, Florida, everywhere, and they're not staying in our hotels. We make our money off of hotel tax, and we won't get that hotel motel tax. So I just think for economic development, maybe putting it there, it doesn't say where, but putting it in our plan that amateur sports is an opportunity economically that we should be looking at for that. So that, I just want to be clear, I'm not trying to tell any jurisdiction where to go, but if you set a tone saying, economic development, Hamilton County, we're looking for something that will foster amateur sports, amateur sports tourism, if you will, to bring those tournaments to town, you know, they've got everything, dancing. I was out in Indiana this weekend, and I looked, it was a lot of money being spent. I had to drive out there, we had to, we had to get a hotel, we had to food, I mean, everything, and my niece is 12 years old, and, and she's got three more other places that we've got to go. Then my other niece is in AAU Sports, and I've got to travel there, headed to Atlanta, they're heading over here, they're heading different places. We, we do need to hone that in in Hamilton County. We do have a few places, but helping them to expand that around hotel and kids coming from all over the world, I think would be a futuristic approach for our county. So just wanted to have it highlighted. I don't know exactly where, but have it highlighted, and if you have it highlighted, you know, someone will come to us with maybe an opportunity or an idea. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear, not to say it had to be there, but somewhere in Hamilton County and kind of having that point in our economic plan. And I don't want to hold it up. I hope we can add these bullet points to, and those people that were, it left off, or if you already have them, add those folks to it, because I know we'll probably get calls about it. But thank you for the work. This has been great, and I know you did this before COVID, so you're able to come after COVID and add these areas, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And my purpose is, since we talked about Forest Park, is to educate those that are listening and let them know that we have no real jurisdiction over how that Forest Fair Mall area is used. So if they start calling us about, what about doing a sports thing? It's not that it's out of the, it's out of possibility, but that the county commissioners don't control that area. So, okay, so thank you so much. We'll move forward. We have before us items three, four, five, and six, which are resolutions to appoint members to different boards and commissions. And first of all, I want to thank those that are listening that have asked to be on boards and commissions. We are, and so for some reason, there's been, and that's a good thing, an inordinate amount of people that want to be involved with county government, and that's awesome. And so we are getting you in. We're almost there as far as filling those vacancies, but continue to, to bring more in. But I would like to make a motion to defer items three, four, five, and six to make sure that as we look at dates of expiration on different boards and commissions, that we make sure that those are accurate. So my motion is to defer items three, four, five, and six until March the 24th, this coming Thursday.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Jimis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. That's all on our agenda, but I will open it up if there's any last comments that, Vice President, did you have anything? Commissioner Dreehouse? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Jimis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.